Just keep it all in the same spots. Grab them all the way out.
I keep, keep, I still need to say we stay at the air.
Good for you.
Works out of here, third, seven years. Kind of bottom like that. I just said one month.
Oh, this is where it's from being.
Yes, that's good.
And. I have watched that and then I'm like, there's a little bit of an error.
That's good. How did you separate your following by years or you say it's for construction? How did you? We have lots, okay. Okay, so we'll get started as five oh seven and I'll call the meeting to order with a roll call vote, a roll call. Amber. Christina.
Here.
Patty.
Here.
Erin.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Accent is Mark and God. Patty, it's good to see you. Good to see you Patty.
Thank you. I don't look very good, but you know, I'm here. I'm alive and kicking right now.
You look good, so glad you're here. Thankful.
Thank you.
And so now we just need an approval of the agenda as presented.
Want to motion?
Motion.
Agenda as presented.
Thank you Erin. Motion by Erin.
It's not good. I guess maybe we need to second it, but I'd like to amend, there's no closed session tonight, but I know you can amend that agenda.
We don't have to, we can just, when we adjourn, we can just adjourn and not going closed session.
Okay, we don't have. I don't believe so.
Okay, if you, if you want to amend the agenda, that's, that's totally fine. We looked it up today and, but if you feel more comfortable to amend the agenda, not.
Yeah, I kind of.
Come in.
I would feel more comfortable if we did, because then everybody felt we didn't actually go close, but I think I have it.
I have it. Yeah, come on.
So do we have, we have the second motion, then we can amend it.
Or do you want to just, since no one's seconded it, do you want to just?
Just make the motion to approve the agenda as presented and not going into closed session.
Moving closed session.
Motion by Erin.
I'll second that.
Would you say so, Patty, and talk loud into the microphone? And we had a motion by Erin and a seconded, again. All in paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Patty, affirmative.
Well, I think before you get started, can I, we were trying to. Yes, Christina, thank you. At our last meeting, someone called to question and that raises the level for now they are being, which I wholeheartedly agree with, it needs to be, that needs to be raised. So we need to clearly define those Robert Schulz orders and hopefully we're gonna talk about that more in that closed session when we get that rescheduled. This is close to the boardrooms and my close, sorry, the Robert Schulz order. I don't think either one of those meetings are closed session, but that's not what I'm saying about right now. I just wanted to say, if we're gonna follow those rules, I hope we follow all of that. For example, the speakers recognized by the chair, they have the floor, they're coming. There are very few interruptions that are allowed for that. Would it be good for me, because I often have to jump in and have something to say, that it would be good to remember the way to be recognized. Another example would be, you can't just jump in and call the question while the speaker is talking. The speaker needs to finish talking and. Now, they might be not good if another member asks them, would they feel the floor for a question regarding their remarks or something like that, but we can't just jump in and call the question. But when the speaker's finished, then another member who wants to call the question might be recognizing to do that. Now, we're very strict tools about when he's in the act of that his motion has been seconded and is approved by a third vote, which is what we did. And the reason they do that is because that's a very serious matter to call the question, because you're moving to limits, to restrict, to deprive a board member's right to discuss something. And so I love it if we're gonna start following those Robert Schulz order, but we need to follow all of that, including how people are recognized and all of those things. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, and we will be rescheduling our boardrooms discussion. We, not all of our board members should be in the last room, so we have requests to reschedule that. We can discuss as a board how we want to proceed with Robert Schulz order and the degrees and, and that sort of thing. So we will discuss that as a board. Thank you so much. That was Joe. And now we have Dr. Wilson and Joe Carter here, going to approve the resolution. Every month I have a motion first and then discuss.
Or just discuss first.
Is he presenting?
Or we, or we start to, I would just talk about it.
Either way.
I just didn't want to.
If, does he have some prepared personnel?
Yes.
Ask questions.
I believe so. Yeah, I have some cancer down there in this presentation as well. The official presentation. I think he's through a lot of them. Yeah. So I have a couple of questions that why not, Patty, that maybe we have to say, should I ask the first or do you want to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. I was concerned about, we have the board approved purchasing that equity for eight point two seven million dollars, but the resolution is for eight point six five million dollars. So I was concerned that's a three hundred, uh, three hundred and eighty thousand dollar difference there. So I kind of looked into, I talked to our manager and did things and I understand a big chunk of it might be title insurance, because title insurance is, is a set formula based on per thousand dollars. So for eight point two seven million dollars, title insurance might be around two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand dollars here. But there's another eighty thousand or so that I was concerned about. Can you guys tell me what that, those expenses are, or the, those closing fees, what, I mean, what else is in it?
He's gonna address that.
You can ask him that, yeah.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Yes, he's doing.
I have some doubts.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Oh, okay. Joe, do you know about that? How did I jump so much?
Yeah, uh, sorry, should I speak? Sorry, I'm not trying to interrupt your proceedings.
What's that?
Is it okay if I respond? I, I think I've talked over somebody, so I was apologizing, sorry. Uh, I'll go ahead and address that for you all, yeah, absolutely. So, you know, the interesting thing about the way that our world works in the, the capital markets is there are certain tax advantage statuses for, well, let me, let me say it this way. This is just to provide us flexibility tomorrow. It's not to borrow additional money. But there are tax advantage status out into capital markets for purchasers of bonds who buy them at something other than par, which means just, you know, five percent, if five percent is the yield and someone wants it, uh, five percent coupon on that five percent yield, that's what we call a par bond. And so the amount of principal that we issue is the same as the amount of proceeds you receive from the investor. One of the things that can happen in certain markets that we're just trying to provide the flexibility for is to go ahead and allow for anyone who might want a discounted structure. So the idea is not that you pay more principal or more interest. The idea is that if somebody wants to buy these bonds at less than face value and as a result, receive less than, uh, the yields that they could otherwise receive. So in other words, it's, this would be like buying points on your mortgage, you know, if you pay in thirty five hundred dollars, you get a reduced rate. That's kind of what, what they're doing is, you know, rather than uh, paying ninety six five for a hundred thousand dollar mortgage, you know, they would pay ninety six and a half percent of a hundred thousand dollars worth of bonds. And as a result, they will receive a lower return rate of, of return in terms of the coupon rate or the interest rate on those bonds, but they do not pay full price then for the principal amount. So all we're trying to do is allow for us to cast the widest net in terms of what kind of structure we're looking to do. You know, right now, we, we are out pre-marketing this and the par amount is eight million, two hundred seventy five thousand dollars. Uh, right now premiums are what are driving this. And again, so, you know, par bonds, bonds that have the same coupon and yield, uh, just don't carry the kind of tax advantage. And I'm, I'm not a tax attorney, nor am I a CPA, so need to be a little bit careful about what I'm saying. Uh, but we don't plan to issue any more than eight point two seven five right now. It'll be interesting to see what happens uh, in the market, if anybody would like to have a discount. What we're trying to do again is suppress those yields as low as we possibly can. So within that, because you're adopting a parameters resolution this evening so that we can price this tomorrow, uh, we're not actually approving final rates. We're just trying to get within, uh, create a box that allows us to work and not, not have to come back to you with another board meeting and cancel the sale tomorrow morning. You know, this is something that, uh, we do quite regularly and I will admit that that box we leave pretty large, but the reason we leave the box that we're kind of confined in for these parameters relatively large is just so that, uh, if we get in a position where we, uh, run into a tough market and we think the market's gonna continue to get tougher, then we can make adjustments as need be and be able to still bring you a deal. You know, right now, it'll, it will be interesting tomorrow to see just a little bit of commentary on the markets. We've got some historically low, what we call ratios in our market, which is that you all are able to borrow pretty, pretty low or relatively very low relative to how, where the federal government is borrowing right now on their debt. Um, so we're gonna do a little bit of price discovery. We think we've got the demand there. We think we've got the opportunity to get that done. But in terms of the total overall cost of issuance, including that bond insurance, we're projecting right now that that will be around a hundred ninety three thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars and fifteen cents. Uh, again, that will kind of depend on that structure. Most of that is locked in, but what we're trying to ultimately produce is, you know, the eight million, two eighty three, seven sixty seven and forty two cents, the check that you wrote and pay those costs of issuance. And that could look, you know, we, we could have a deal that is, uh, you know, I guess, I suppose, an eight point five million dollar deal with, you know, that's bought at eighty five percent or ninety five percent that, you know, has a coupon rate in the threes or three and a halves, or we could have a deal that's all five percent coupons where we only issue eight million dollars. What we're focused on is getting you that eight point two eight three, seven six seven and forty two cents and to the penny as best we can and pay cost of issuance. That's all we're looking to do. There's, there's, um, uh, nothing else to it. It's just that we've got a, when we're not adopting a final actual deal, we've got to have a little bit of cushion in there. And this is how we do that. We, we create an opportunity where, uh, um, the board president then can sign a bond per, or certificate purchase agreement in this case without needing another board meeting and another board approval. So that's the reason that that principal amount is higher. It's just to allow us to go up to that. Should anybody want some sort of a discount structure that is yield wise, again, there has to be a yield benefit to you all. So they would have to be giving us a deal that is better or proposing, you know, a set of structuring that is better than what we currently have. Right now, we're, you know, again, casting that widest net, trying to find the most potential investors and, and tailoring to that largest group so that we have the largest amount of demand, but we will take all comers tomorrow and, um, we want to provide ourselves that flexibility.
So, just to clarify, because this is an open meeting, so the people in the community can listen in here while we're discussing and understanding. You're saying we have to borrow more principal so that we can pay interest in order to get, in order to be able to borrow it? What, what are you saying? Explain that, what you mean with David. Let's explain what I have to say.
So this is admittedly a very difficult concept. So let's just start, uh, back up just a little bit. The, the market is slightly better than the, on the eighteenth, it's the eighteenth or the nineteenth, whatever board meeting, uh, I zoomed in for last time. And so we're gonna be about two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars less in total debt service than what we thought, if we can get the deal done as, as we've marketed it today and hopefully take orders tomorrow. Uh, that, that means, you know, about eight to ten thousand dollars a year better than what we showed you then. So we're about five hundred and forty five thousand dollars a year is your annualized payment. What we are looking to do is simply reduce the total payments with principal and interest to its lowest amount possible. Uh, what that means in our market, because we can buy bonds at, you know, I mean, most folks won't buy below about ninety five percent, but we could, we could generate, I'm gonna do some math here. The, and the math will be even. We're trying to get to the lowest total principal and interest cost and structure a deal that works best for, for you all. So at eight point two eight three, seven six seven, if we were borrowing that at ninety five percent, we could issue as much as eight point seven. So we're actually not even gonna allow ourselves to go all the way to everybody ordering discounts, because we don't think that's gonna happen. On the other side of that, we could issue, you know, generally a hundred and twelve dollar price is the most that people will accept, uh, in the marketplace. So we could issue as little as seven point four million dollars in principal. And believe it or not, those two separate deals, depending on the structure that you have a million, one point four million dollars in difference in the principal owed, will have almost no difference on the principal and interest. And the only difference will be because we incorporate the time value of money. So it will be an equal share basically, if we, if we made all of that, if we transferred or trans, transpond, you know, switched all that to today's dollars. So right now, what we showed you in December is that your debt service would have been approximately total thirteen point nine two five million dollars, okay? What we think we're gonna be at tomorrow, what we hope to do based on the market is thirteen point six nine eight, six oh five dot oh nine. So we're down to thirteen point six million total on that, you know, borrowing what is essentially eight point two eight three million dollars. The difference is, is we can control only the yields and that is what people are willing to pay in terms of a dollar price for the, or what rate of return people are willing to accept into the marketplace. But we do have to be cognizant of the fact that again, there are tax advantages to buying these bonds at different prices than par, which could mean lower principal or higher principal, but ultimately what we're aiming to do is reduce the total principal and interest costs as much as the market will allow us to do. And if the principal amount grows, it is likely because someone has proposed a discount structure to us. In other words, they're not going to pay face value upfront. So we've got to issue a little bit more, but what they're accepting on the back of that is a lower rate of return than the market at a whole, or as in general. And we have a couple of those bonds in this particular, uh, structure. Right now, we're looking at, hold on just one second. Our term bond that we currently have maturing out at the, the, on four one of forty nine, out twenty five years, we currently are gonna pay four and an eighth percent or the investors would, is the proposed structure, so four point one two five percent. But the yield out there for them, what, what we think the market yield is going to be is four point three seven percent. So they are going to accept a rate of, of interest on their bonds significantly lower, you know, uh, almost a quarter of a percent lower than what they're getting as a whole. And as a result of, or than what the market is getting as a whole. And so as a result of that, they're gonna pay less than face value for that. So they're gonna pay ninety six right now, the way we're, we've structured it is, or the way that the, the math works, sorry, we're not structuring this, is that that is ninety six point two seven two percent of the actual, uh, par amount of the bonds. So they're gonna pay less than the par amount to get a hold of that. And so as, because of that, in order to fund that, we have to have more money or, or higher principal balance, but the offset is you pay significantly less interest. And there are, when you have discount bonds, uh, and again, I'm not a tax attorney or CPA, so I'm speaking a little out of turn here, so I gotta be careful. But when you have discount bonds, when you have a structure where you're receiving less rate of return than what the market as a whole is, is accepting, you are able to sell that up to par in the future if rates change without having to pay income tax on that. So we're not planning that ever, that anybody is ever gonna resell these bonds. We are trying to find end users, but we do have to provide them with marketable liquid bonds. And so in order to do that, we're trying to find the best structure possible and that's, that's what we're looking to do. Now, somebody may come into that, that, that term bond and say, we are willing to take a lower rate of return than four thirty seven if we go to a five percent coupon on those bonds. And if that's the case, rather than issuing more, because we need that eight point two eight three, now people are gonna be paying more than face value. And I know this is a confusing, uh, concept. It's a really, it, it's just a mathematical equi, uh, um, calculation. So know that we're only gonna generate enough money to pay the cost of issuance and pay for that building, nothing else. And our goal through this structuring is to minimize the total principal and interest that you pay and keep level debt service so that you know that that's a line item on your budget over time. Those are our financing goals. All that we've done here within this resolution is again, we're providing, we're putting ourselves in a box, right? So we can't go over that eight point six five million. We won't really be able to go under what people as a whole will accept in the market. So I, you know, it's gonna be at least probably an eight million dollar deal in this market. And, but, but the, the principal amount is, is very fluid and liquid as it is with, uh, every lease deal that we do. Now, the difference with GOs is if we're doing a refinancing, we're gonna try to generate a bunch of premium, because you guys need bonding capacity, right? On the GO side, we're gonna try to steal capacity by issuing less than was outstanding. But otherwise, on the GO side, we have a cap, a par cap, so we can't issue any more than what the par is. Now, so that means that we wouldn't, we wouldn't be talking about fluid, you know, amounts if this were a general obligation. We'd be talking about issuing eight point two eight three million and then we try to produce some premium to pay your cost of issuance, okay? So it's to, it's a totally different look when we're trying to just minimize principal and interest costs altogether on the COP side of things. It's a different set of considerations. But ultimately, the, the consideration is, we are trying to structure the deal to catch the broadest net of potential investors. Again, you know, three hundred and fifty plus institutional bond salesmen. I think we've got access to close to four hundred thousand investor accounts from the biggest companies you read about in the news like Vanguard and BlackRock and Incap, all the way down to individuals that are sitting in that room. Uh, uh, you know, anybody who's willing to buy at five thousand dollars or more increment, because that's the minimum amount we're allowed to sell these at. We wanna sell them too and we wanna minimize your total costs, but that, the principal amount is fluid because of this idea that, you know, if we have a discounted bonds, we can, you know, there's a tax advantage in there to pay less. And then if they need to resell those, they don't have to pay income tax if the markets come down and their bonds are more valuable. Or vice versa, if they sell, if they buy bonds at a premium and sell them before they have recouped all of that premium, they being the investor, they get some benefits there as well. So selling just par bonds, just trying to go out and issue eight point two eight three plus the cost of issuance and sell those out is, is gonna be tough, because we're gonna restrict ourselves to people who are willing to buy at par, which is usually individuals who can buy on their own. Um, that, because they're just looking to, you know, buy and hold those and don't necessarily need to be, have those be liquid investments. Whereas even, even a Vanguard or Northwestern Mutual or Travelers, you know, they might have a need to sell those bonds at some point. You know, ultimately, if State Farm, let's say, buys a bunch of these bonds tomorrow, uh, they're gonna, you know, if they have a huge loss year, let's say there's a hurricane that comes through and wipes out, you know, couple states in the Gulf, they're gonna need to liquidate their positions and they wanna be in the most tax advantage status if they need to liquidate those positions. And as a result, they're gonna ask for some sort of structure that benefits them that way. Uh, and so that's what we're trying to do, is make sure we, again, cast, put a structure together that the, the highest number of investors are gonna be interested in so that we can minimize those total principal and interest costs. And so we're, you know, again, market's a little better, so we think it's gonna be about two hundred and twenty five thousand better than before, so about thirteen point seven million dollars of total debt service on that deal. And that's, uh, that's where we think we'll be. But again, you know, this is just providing us the flexibility to structure into the market and, and be the most advantageous, uh, to you all.
So can you tell us what, what, what exactly are the things included in cost of issuance? I understand the idea of need to offer more so you can get people who aren't my lesson. You did a great job, I say, thank you. What, what else do you mean? Because you just said it at the end again, you said something about the cost of issuance. Can you tell me, are there any other things included in that phrase?
Yeah, so the largest, the largest cost of issuance, uh, let me confirm that, is gonna be our fee, right? And that's gearing up the big machine to do all that sale. And that is, right now, we project that to be seventy thousand, three hundred and thirty seven dollars and fifty cents. And then we've got, so you're, you're dead on with the bond insurance. Right now, what we're looking at is getting what we call bond insurance. We got approved by AGM, which is one of the two main, which are one of the two main, which is one of the two main companies. Man, that, that's a participle or a direct object or indirect object that I'm messing up there, I know. But anyway, I think we get to point. Uh, AGM, uh, put in, has put into bid at twenty four basis points, which doesn't mean a whole lot to you, but they basically take a, a, a small portion of the overall debt service for the bonds. And as, as a result of that, that fee that they take upfront, they provide insurance that you're going to make payments on this. So if you were able, ever to have to default, the insurance company would come in and pick up and make those payments for you. What that is, is a credit enhancement, much like your rating, your credit rating. In other words, it, it helps investors know that that's a safe investment or, or makes it even safer than it already is. And that is going to pay off, pay itself off. We've done the analysis. I don't, I apologize, I don't have it sitting in front of me, but it is a lower total overall principal and interest cost to pay for that insurance because of the bump in the credit rating and therefore the lower interest rates that you get. Uh, that we project to be about thirty two thousand dollars, thirty two thousand, eight hundred and six, eight hundred seventy six dollars and sixty five cents. With that, with the bond insurance, they require typically that we either do ten percent, uh, reserve fund, so issue ten percent more than what you need and let it sit there until you've paid off the debt, which obviously incurs a lot of additional interest costs. And we're talking about issuing another eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars, you know, give or take, of bonds and paying interest over that time, or they allow what's called a surety bond, which is essentially, we just pay, uh, another little insurance premium to not have to do that, that, uh, eight hundred and twenty thousand dollar deposit and issue that additional debt and do all that stuff. So that right now is eleven thousand, five hundred and sixty four dollars and eighteen cents. And I will send you this set of numbers. I apologize, we just got it right before, uh, came on here. So those two things, about forty four thousand and change for bond insurance. Again, ours is a little over seventy thousand. And then the remaining cost of issuance is, the largest is going to be your, the board's special tax council, uh, Gilmore and Bell at fifty five thousand. And Gilmore and Bell's role is to draft all the documents related to the financing. You know, we draft a big prospectus, essentially, call it an official statement. Put all of that work together. Uh, they've also drafted all the site lease documents and all the documents tying the property to the, uh, issuance itself. And then they also certify to the IRS that these, uh, bonds, or these certificates in this case, are able to be issued at, at tax exempt status. So in other words, that the holders of those bonds do not pay income tax and as a result are willing to pay a, a higher price, which for you all means lower interest cost. So, uh, that fee is at fifty five thousand. We've got a rating fee at fifteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty five. So even though we've been out and got a rating from Standard and Poor's a bunch this year, they still require us to go, uh, pay again to get that rating. But again, that is essentially like a credit rating for you all, um, in terms of like, like us, if we were, you know, buying or borrowing money for a mortgage or a car payment or credit rating is gonna matter on what interest rate we can get. And you all received an affirmed rating on your A plus, uh, what we call issuer credit rating, because these are certificates of participation, which is annual appropriation debt. You take a notch down, so it's an A overall for this. Uh, but that is something that even with the insurance, number one, it makes the insurance a lot cheaper. Number two, adding that rating, uh, gives us that other additional added benefit of having that credit enhancement there. You've got a trustee, their job, these certificates work differently than your, again, than your GO bonds. Your GO bonds just go straight into your, uh, Capital Projects Fund, Fund four hundred for you to spend and you're responsible for tracking those expenditures. With leases, one of the things that investors require is that this goes into a trust account. And then the, your administration, as you have costs, which you've already done this, so you're just gonna requisition it on closing. But believe it or not, a trust account has to be set up. They've gotta do all of their administrative costs and fees and that's a requirement that we have in Missouri. So, uh, they're the ones that are gonna actually set up an account, bring the account in, verify that you've requisitioned the right amounts of money for the cost of issuance and the payment of the, the actual building itself. And then they're gonna make those payments back to you. All of that money's gonna come back your way outside of those costs of issuance to reimburse yourself. Uh, but we still have to pay for it. Uh, publishing, I believe is part of the title. That's something we don't often see. So, uh, publishing a title report, I'm gonna guess, title insurance. You know, again, we've got to make sure that, that, that you do have clean, clear title to this, since we are encumbering it. And you've probably heard me tell this story before, but you say, how can, how can that be? We bought the other half of the building. We, uh, we did a lease for Sparta here a few years ago, which I know some of you are from, a little bit familiar with Sparta. Uh, and we found out that their middle school, their oldest building, there is an easement running almost to the dead middle of that building that the city has to construct a road on at any point, should they wanna do that. Which means that the, the school district essentially does not free and clear own their middle school that's been around for a hundred years. Uh, so we were, we had to switch and take a different piece of property for, uh, the, the actual collateral for that. And so one of the things that we've got to be able to do, because this could cause you to have to pay, you know, could cause people to make a, you know, mandatory redemption or something to make you have to pay off this debt immediately, uh, is we wanna make sure that the title is free and clear and that more so, if there's a mistake made, that someone else is covering it. And, and we have that for our mortgages too. Usually you'll see title insurance in there. It's usually not almost ten grand. Uh, but that's a little bit different. And then the, the other cost in there is underwriters' counsel, seventy five hundred dollars. Underwriters' counsel is a little bit of a misnomer. I mean, that's not necessarily. I mean, that's not necessarily our counsel. What we have in Missouri is a, is a environment where the only person really checking and making sure that we've done everything correctly and that you've done everything correctly on this is your special tax counsel. We love your special tax counsel. We think they're great. We work with Gilmore and Bell on a lot of deals. They are tremendous. We, we're not trying to say that they don't do a great job, but the, your exposure to risk and our exposure to risk is governed by an attorney and that is working directly for you. So essentially what underwriters' counsel is, and if you'd like a better write-up on this, I, I, we have a better write-up, is, is an insurance policy, another basically way that we can make sure that we have complied with all laws, where there's an independent third party not working for the board, not trying to get this transaction done, just simply reviewing documents, reviewing that everything is legal within the state of Missouri, within the IRS, within FINRA, within the SEC, within the MSRB rules, within the rules that the, the state of Missouri applies and, and statutes, and just making sure overall that the transaction does not have any holes in it where we could be potentially exposing you all or ourselves to liability. So those are the additional costs of issuance to get you to ninety thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. And so that is the cost of issuance and, you know, we try to keep those as low as we can and try to balance what is the most effective way for you all in terms of what limits your exposure, what limits your interest costs in terms of those credit enhancements, but also just make sure that the deal gets done exactly how it needs to be done and that you, once you've got it, you don't have to worry about it anymore. And those, those are the costs of issuance, and I'd be happy to take any questions on those as well.
I know it's not to you, but if it was you, do you think all of these are necessary? All of those things are, are some of them? You don't know, it seems like they were. I'm, I'm not questioning you, I'm just asking you that, because I think you probably are one of the big decisions about all these. I think you again, or explain them.
Yeah, you know, the, so we, we've, we can't unring the bell on the rating fee, although I will tell you the rating fee more than pays for itself because that does allow us to access investors at much lower interest rates. Bond counsel is something that, you know, we definitely cannot avoid. You need them to certify. You need an attorney to sign your, your tax exemption status. Trustee, again, that's not, unfortunately, that's nothing that we can avoid. You know, the publishing and the title insurance, you know, the other thing we could go for is a full title report, but in terms of the timing, title reports take a long time and they are significantly more expensive. So I don't think that's what you're looking to do is, is to try to increase costs and slow things down. The really, the only fee that you, you would have the option to, to get rid of at this point, well, I, I would need to talk with the attorneys that have worked on this deal. But you could potentially go without a certified opinion from, from the underwriters' counsel, that seventy-five hundred dollars. But, you know, and, and you're not going to hurt our feelings, you're not, I, I doubt you're going to hurt underwriters' counsel's feelings. And I mean, he has done some review of those documents, David Reed at Fisher Broyles. So he may, he may have some, you know, administrative costs he's, he has to cover. But again, you know, what we're trying to avoid is a situation where a school board is represented by an attorney who's drafting all these documents for your benefit, and we have some sort of miscommunication or they, you know, if they were to make a mistake, and again, Gilmore and Bell's great, I'm not saying they ever would, but they could hide that from all of us and we would never know. So this is an independent third-party attorney reviewing all documents, making sure from an attorney's perspective who does this all over the country. In fact, I think David was just himself, underwriters' counsel on, I want to say over two and a half billion, over three billion dollars worth of bonds within the last two or three years. So he is doing this all over the country. He does not do this just for Stiefel or just for the Ozark School District. He does this everywhere, almost everywhere in the country. And the, and the idea behind it is, and we like the idea of that, is that then we've got a third party, independent third party for relatively little costs verifying that these documents were done appropriately and the transaction was done appropriately and the lease portion, the site lease, everything was done within state laws and that we didn't run across any issues that at some point, you know, an attorney was incented to ignore or glaze over because they wanted to get this financing done essentially. But again, love Gilmore and Bell, don't think that's happening, but it's just a kind of a warm cozy fuzzy blanket that makes us feel better when we have a third party. But that's, that would be the only thing that really that you could probably pull out of there from a cost perspective. And, you know, at this point, he hasn't reviewed final docs, but, but we could probably reduce that by four or five thousand dollars if the board should choose to do that.
Thank you again for answering my question. I know a lot of people probably have questions too. I just had some things I wanted to ask you about. Thank you, thank you for Steven, thank you Joe, any other questions? And a motion is to approve the resolution as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Patrick, second by Emma, all in favor? Any votes? Thank you, thank you board. And we just need a motion to approve. And we will not move into a closed session.
I, I was just thinking that we might say something to kind of let them know what, what kinds of things are in that half of the building. For example, offices are ready to go. They've already, they're ready to go. The cost per square foot was, I didn't look at my number right now, it was fifty-five or fifty-seven dollars per square foot, which is way below what you're going to do. We're going to build something or vice versa. I just thought we would kind of explain some of what was purchased because all of a sudden it's, oh, we're buying. Let's tell them what is, what, what are we going to do with it right now? And I know we're waiting for a long range planning, pages like old news, but for now, are we moving into there or what else can we use? You know, I think that'd be a good thing to talk about and hear from talks about it. So thank you for that.
So as you said, the square footage, the cost per square footage is very low. It is, thank you for pointing to this building. We are currently working on moving a technology department into this building. There are certain rooms in this building that, there are, I can use her. There are certain rooms, there are certain rooms in this building that. This one. We'll get there. No, it's okay. Okay, yeah, there we go. There are certain rooms in this building that are already, already go for technology for our servers. So you always want to have redundant systems, but you don't want if something were catastrophed or come in or server will be blown away, what are we going to do? And so those are already set up, where you go, which we do not have to build, which is great. We're also moving maintenance into this area too. We are the front of it, and it's not, this is just, this is just what we know of as of today. The front of it has office space, so those gentlemen that are tech and maintenance that need space, that is there already. And we will be doing a long-range planning and as well as just conversations. We will also be looking at what kind of programs that potentially we can live in this building or how can we use it four years down the road if we have growth by the end of the past two years? So it gives us a, one of the opportunities that we didn't have. And I think with this building, and I asked Dr., excuse me, Dr. Tuckett this, you know, if you build a brand new building, you're looking at four hundred and twenty-five, four hundred dollars per square foot. But renovating though, they're looking at two hundred to two hundred and twenty-five. So I'm like you, I start writing down numbers, even with the investment that we made of the eight hundred dollars, you know, the roof is renovated at two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five dollars per square foot, it's still less than four hundred and twenty-five dollars per square foot to be able to build a brand new building. So it does help us in the long run.
And I hope also consolidating.
Yes, with maintenance and the tech and the renovations and consolidating some maintenance, absolutely.
And thank you for that press release. And thank communications for the press release that was sent to the public regarding this. And we spoke on AYB regarding this, so the school has not a lot of information on this, so we appreciate that.
Make a motion of you, Jen.
Second.
Motion by Emma, second by Erin, all in favor? Thank you all. Happy New Year, thank you everybody.
If you guys don't, you can't download.
Yeah.